This time, gentlemen, I'm going to call the Burke County Board of Commissioners Special Meeting for Friday, January the 10th to order. Madam Clerk, I'd like to report that all the commissioners are present today along with the county manager and the deputy county manager, Chief Finance Officer, and along with the county attorney. Ladies and gentlemen, let me stand up so I can see some of -- thank you for being here today. It's important that people get involved in local government. We do appreciate you being here so very much. Do me one favor. It's time, get your phones out, check them, make sure they're on silent. We would appreciate that, everyone, as we go into some discussions today, so we would appreciate that. As I think everybody's aware, that we're not letting anyone in the audience speak today. It's not an open meeting for the public to speak. This is discussion time for the commissioners. Gentlemen, let me open today by saying that the purpose of today's meeting is three or four-fold, and I'd just like to address a couple of things. First of all, there's been some reporting made, and we have been privileged to some information that we had not been privileged to before from the local government commission concerning their allegations, and that is the LGC allegations, of some inefficiencies at the Tourism Development Authority here in Burke County. As you all have received copies of those, like I say, none of us had seen those, I don't think, until recently, so we do all do have a copy. Also, the LGC had reported other discrepancies that they felt were important, so I feel like the county needs to take responsibility. If we violated any fiduciary responsibility in the county, or if we violated some oversight responsibility that we have that we weren't aware of, that's the reason we're here today. Should do or shouldn't. Okay? That came by. All right. I lost my phone. So, if there's anything that we need to do. I think we've lost again. There was -- we're going and coming here. Anybody on the county board or any? Wrong, and that's not what we're here for today. Again, it's just to seek some clarity in some of the things that has been reported, and mainly to see if they have done anything wrong. This is going to be free-flowing. There are some history that may need to come out today about TDA, the establishment of that organization, and how it has moved forward. The longest-serving member on that board, it would be Commissioner Wayne Abley. Commissioner Vice Chairman Scott Mowee is on that board now, and he will be able to provide some information for us. So, at this time, I think I'm going to ask the vice chairman to proceed with any comments that he has.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For those, is everybody familiar with the history of the TDA? Did everybody have a chance to look at those notes? That was, the TDA was started in 2007, am I correct in that, JR? And so, going back and looking at this, and I know Wayne's got more of a history than I do about the organization. I came on several years ago. You know, there were some things that, you know, we were trying to get clarity on, and there's a lot of information that we've uncovered in the last six months that, you know, about some, maybe some inefficiencies due on many parties' part, you know, because sometimes I'm wondering, going back and taking a look at some of the information we've looked at, you know, a lot of times it breaks down when you're dealing with different departments or you're dealing with different organizations, sometimes it comes down to communication. And, you know, I think there's blame to go around when it comes to communication, going back, because when I look back at the '07 information that actually organized, legislation that actually organized this, and then some of the things that were supposed to be in process, you know, over a decade ago, those kind of fell by the wayside. So, really, what we're trying to do today is not so much, you know, there might be some change in order, you know, at some point, but today, we're just trying to get clarity on what we should have been doing the entire time, whether it's reporting, the TDA reporting to the county commissioners, which in legislation, that's what it was supposed to do. And, you know, through no fault of TDA, I think there was probably some miscommunications between the county at some point and TDA, and it was decided that reporting was not being done. And so, this isn't an indictment on anybody. We're just trying to give clarity today, so moving forward, we get this right. And so, because today, I just want to make sure that any questions that you may have about the TDA, we get them out today, because it's a great organization. I've been on it three years. I'm proud to be a member of the TDA. This is not an indictment on the board. We've got great board members. We've got a great, Ed does a wonderful job. I've touted Ed's, what a great job he's done since, you know, I got elected three years ago, and been able to be on that board and has watched the growth of the TDA. I think Ned might want to correct me, but I think we did over $107 million in tourism dollars last year, which is incredible. You compare the statistics on how we compare countywide to other western counties, and I don't have that in front of me, but I know versus our peers, we have, we're like maybe third out of 12 or whatever. There's, Ed could correct me on that as well, but we're really doing a great job as far as tourism goes, so that's not, we're not questioning the ability of the TDA to do that. What we're trying to do is kind of clean the TDA up a little bit, because in some ways, when I look at the tourism, how it was set up back in '07, it was good at the time, but looking at it now, you know, there's some things that I think we could tweak to make it more efficient, make it easier on Ed, and easier on our board, and easier for our commissioners to all work together. And so, you know, and I'll bring up some of my opinions in a little bit, but does anybody else have a comment moving forward on any concerns or questions?
At some point, yes. I'm assuming.
It's free-flowing right now. Commissioner Taylor, if you have some points you'd like to make, you certainly can do that.
Mr. Chairman, I felt like we would get a report maybe from human resources or somebody else on the files on some of this stuff, and we don't have that scheduled today.
Every piece of document that we have been furnished is in that packet that we gave you today, sir.
Well, bear with me a few minutes, because it's a little bit of a recap that I did. And on your basic information, on page three, dot one states "lack of understanding," excuse me. Dot number two is "a balance of profit and loss statements," and it quotes that there's 204,000 in question. Audit firm number, number three is "audit firm did not act or acknowledge two key weaknesses of internal controls." And the fourth dot is "questions about the trolley service, and what was legitimate and what was not." And then on page four is a summary of the efficiencies, and by the numbers, CA firms, there was total of eight years with three different CPA firms. All eight years had suggested separations of duties and audit team drafting of duties, and the drafting of financial statements, five listed significant deficiencies, and six audits listed non-compliance. Page five was letters from Brian Steen suggesting some corrections and changes. Page seven is a statement of services provided of Burke County staff, if we did the, how they would handle those things if we did the bookkeeping from in-house. Page 24, between the pages of 27 and 24, by the way, is a history of the TDA, and how it came to life, and how we set it up, and the changes made over those many years. Page 24, board of, this actually is the organizational structure of TDA. All the board of directors are appointed by the commissioners. All vacancies that come about are appointed by the commissioners. Vice chairman and chairman are elected by the board of commissioners. Treasurer is elected by the members. And the election of officers are elected annually by the members. Policy and procedures must adhere to Burke County's policies and procedures. Candidate qualifications are listed on page 25 and expanded on page 27. On page 29 is a letter from Brian Steen with concerns. And 30, the May, 30th, page 30th, May, the, it looks like 18, letter from Department of State of Chairman Karras Jr. referring to the payroll. And 36, numerous letters on the deficiencies came from the state. Four, 1113, four, 2219, five, 142015, five, four, 2015, 10, 2215, 11, 05, 2015, nine, 05, 2019. Now, I was very pleased, Mr. Chairman, with your statement that we were here to see what may be done and can be done, and we're not going to make hardcore decisions today, but I think some of the questions that I have, and wonder why we have not had a little bit of conversation, communications between that board and this board, you know, has the board met on these issues? Do they, or did they make a recommendation that we do not know of or not aware of? And the resource director, you know, what's in the file of some of these people that we might need to be know about before we even attempt to make a decision? And personally, from many aspects and many avenues, we have done nothing but praise the success of TDA and tourism in Burke County. And I think it's a very positive record of some of the things that so many of us have been involved in that, pardon me, but gives us a gold star for the success of it, and we need to keep that in mind. And the other two things at this point I will not mention, because from what you said, it may not be a necessary question. But that's kind of where I am with this, and I hope I swear that some of you can see the points that we are making, that the, it is not, we're not here today, which again, I repeat, I'm happy to hear, to condemn anybody, accuse anybody, make appointments for anything, or change the rules at this point. So, it may be called a fact-finding session, but anyhow, that's my remarks for that at this time, except that some of those people standing up, there's empty seats out here. We'd be glad for them to fill them. There's one over here, so, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Chairman Britt?
I guess my comments become in the form of questions maybe to Scott and Wayne in terms of, as I look through the information that we have, it's not clear to me that the authority perhaps has been operating in the way it was prescribed. And I guess just a couple of points that I'd like some clarity on. The setup of the organization was pretty specific in terms of the percentages of monies that would be placed in three different accounts, remitted to Morganton, Burke County, and Valdez into three accounts. And then, that was also very specific about how those funds would be expended in those three accounts. Has the funds been allocated in that way, and have we been seeing that those allocations are spent as prescribed?
Mr. Chairman, going back to page 12 and page, Article 3, request to approve a resolution to authorize Burke County to levy an additional 3% occupancy tax, and to make other administrative If you read that, you would think that I was involved in that, and actually, the city at that time tried, and I'll just be honest, tried to pull a fast one on us and get this 3% occupancy tax. And how I found out about it is through Jeff Morris, who called me, and that was true, they were trying to get the whole 3% occupancy tax. So, the next day, we all piled in the car with, and met with Representative Waller Church, Mitch Gillespie, Jimmy Jackman. At the Capitol, we met with them and explained what was going on, that Morgan was trying to get this extra 3% occupancy tax. They kept, they actually kept it a secret, nobody knew about it, and so, when we found out about it, we were able to, with the help of Walter Church, and Mitch, and Jimmy, we were able to get that changed where we got, when half of it went into travel and tourism, and not all to Morganton. So, if you read that statement, that's completely wrong.
Mr. Vice Chair?
And Morgan, I'm going to let you address Jeff's question about the appropriation on Valdez, Morganton, and Burke County, and how those are remitted receipt-wise.
The county remits the total of the funds, net of the 3% administrative fee for collection of the tax, to the TDA. With that, each time, and we actually pay it monthly to them, Ed receives the breakdown, mathematical breakdown, to Morganton, Valdez, and my understanding is, he works with those cities. In the past, prior to the audit finding on that it was being perhaps not handled appropriately, there was a question about that. He receives back receipts equal to the amount of their portion, is what I understand. We are not involved in that part. We cut one check to the TDA. They take care of the funds to the cities.
I guess that's my question, Scott. Once those funds are there, are we accounting for them the way they're prescribed?
They are now. I think in the past, there's, you know, there's been a finding that, you know, the receipts weren't, the accounting might not have been what it should have been, and so, at this point, that it is, it's been corrected.
So, then how does the TDA, who makes those decisions? Let me just read some of this portion right here, because it gets kind of hard to follow. "The authority must segregate the remaining net proceeds into three separate accounts as set out in this subdivision. The authority must use at least two-thirds of the funds in each account to promote travel and tourism in each of the named areas, and must use the remainder for tourism-related expenditures in each of the named areas." And the accounts are as follows. Of course, Morganton, 45%, County, 30%, Valdez, 25%. So, who decides within those funds what part is being used as it's prescribed there? The two-thirds to promote travel and tourism, and the remainder for tourism-related expenditure?
Well, I don't want to speak out on that. I can, I will get the TDA to give you a specific response on that, because I don't want to say something that may not be true, but I've got a good idea, but I would rather that be put in writing, and you get the proper response, and it be given to all the commissioners.
Kay, if you would, write that question down, so when we meet with TDA, we can get a good response on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
If you read the beginnings of the organization of this, this was, all has to be submitted by the board and the county, and was, and those percentages were okayed by state government as well as this board. So, it takes a process of involving your congress, your senators, and if you change that, it would have to be rewritten and re-submitted probably by your congressman. Is that close, Brian? I think that's, that's a procedure before.
It's through state legislation, so it wouldn't have to go through.
It takes legislature to change those numbers.
Yeah, that's not, the county definitely, we did not set that up. It had to go through state legislation, and on that, you know, that might be something that we look at to tweak. I don't know at this point.
And that has changed in other counties. I mean, they went to the legislature and changed it to get a bigger amount, so that can be, that can be done with the legislature.
Right. But I thought the question was, are the funds being dispersed as the statute requires? And that's what we're going to need to get an answer on. But if there is a change to that formula in any shape or form, you would have to get the legislature to go back and approve that.
Yeah, that was my thought.
The next thought, and this might be a question for JR perhaps, on page 22 of our information, the finance officer for Burke County is the ex officio finance officer of the authority. Can you elaborate on exactly what that means in terms of what oversight or what responsibility the county might have for those finances, JR?
Well, as ex officio, she is, as ex officio finance officer, the county finance officer would be entitled to any information that she requests, and would be entitled to have all of her questions answered, and would be entitled to come to us if she has any problems with that.
So, that doesn't necessarily imply any responsibility on our part to manage those books, once we have given those funds to the TDA?
Well, it, we have a responsibility to make sure that they're used as the local legislation provides. So, that is our responsibility to hold them to the requirements of the local legislation.
Okay. How are we supposed to hold them to that, that part of what you just said? I mean, how do we hold them? What do you mean by that?
Well...
I'm trying to determine whether the county, like I said in the opening remarks, if we had some oversight responsibilities, and if we were guilty of not doing what we're supposed to do in oversight responsibilities, is that an oversight responsibility that was placed upon us, and did we do our due diligence in doing what we were supposed to?
Well, I think that once these errors came to our attention, I think we have addressed those, both through meetings with the board and through market's actions as ex officio finance director.
Yeah, I interrupted you, Jeff. I'm sorry.
It's fine. So, how far then is our responsibility in terms of seeing that the LGC recommendations are met, and how far is our responsibility in terms of us being satisfied that they're met? I mean, does that go as far as we'd say it must be done this way, or where's the line?
I think we have the ability to dictate that. As our fin, you know, as finance director, we have a responsibility to make decisions once they're made known to us, especially by the local government commission. And we have a responsibility to address and make sure that the TDA is addressing the problems that they come up with in reviewing the TDA audit.
So, would our remedy be holding funds if it's not, if we do not feel they're doing that appropriately?
I think we could do that. It's not written in the local legislation, but if our only, the only way we can deal with violations of the local legislation is to do that, then I would recommend that we do that.
As changing subjects altogether here, another, one of the requirements that I see throughout here is that the board of commissioners is to appoint the chair. I don't think that has happened since I've been on the board.
Yes, yes, we have. We've got minutes, and I had Kay pull those, and I apologize. We actually appointed Polly, and I don't remember the date that we did that. Kay, do you have it in front of you? Kay's going to pull that up, but we, and I apologize, yeah, that could be.
Was that an appointment as chair or as an appointment to the board?
I think that was an appointment as chair, if I can remember the minutes, and I think that may have went back as far as 2011, I think. Anyway, I did ask Kay to pull that one, and we found that one, and I didn't even remember that myself, but it appears that we did do that, so. But like I say, that might be the one and only time that we did do that.
Commissioner Britton, I might add that our main control with Tourism Development Authority is our appointment of its members. And in my opinion, if we know things are going on that shouldn't be going on, we have the ability to withhold funds until those things are changed. I think it would be in the county's best interest to have further local legislation that would spell out, so there wouldn't be any question that the county has the ability to withhold funds in case problems within the TDA aren't being addressed.
Mr. Chairman, on page, I believe it's 26, 25, excuse me, our biggest control comes under how you set it up, and it plainly says, "General Policies and Procedures." "The TDA shall adhere to Burke County's fiscal and budgeting policies and procedure as established by the county and the North Carolina general statutes." Even we don't have the pleasure of changing things without submitting it to the state, like I said before. So, it becomes a, it's a complex issue. I had tried to get ahold of Frida down at Carolina School of Government, and didn't make the connection today, it just ran out of time. But what makes that a little bit complex, we are more involved with this authority than other board-controlled authorities, but we still have limited ability to do some things, and the complexity of it gets a little hard to implement, even some corrective things, except the best policy is probably to go through a mediation of where all of us understand what changes we want and how we're going to get there.
Well, I have some consternation about what you just said, which is everything you said is true about the LGC. We've been given some oversight responsibilities, but there's no avenue to let us know when some things are wrong. In discussions with Ed and Polly, some of these letters from the LGC went to people that I don't even know. They went to former board members. Ed said he had not even seen some of these letters from the LGC. I just hate, it just bothers me that we're charged with some oversight responsibilities, and then we don't know what has happened, so we can exercise whatever responsibility it is, or oversight it is, that we need to exercise. What is the LGC's authority in this whole process of TDAs? that I don't even know. They went to former board members. Ed said he had not even seen some of these letters from the LGC. I just hate, it just bothers me that we're charged with some oversight responsibilities and then we don't know what has happened so we can exercise whatever responsibility it is or oversight it is that we need to exercise. What is the LGC's authority in this whole process of TDAs?
Well, this organization...
Coach Michael.
This organization is considered to be a local government organization that follows, it's a public authority under the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. By this local legislation, it is made a public authority. And as a public authority, the provisions of Chapter 159 and the enforcement by the Local Government Commission come into play. And that's why they look at audits of the TDA the same way they look at audits of the county or the cities.
Kay has looked this up, Jeff. We appointed Polly Ledbetter on August 19th, 2014, and at the same time, we designated her as chair of TDA. All right, other comments?
And as I mentioned earlier, communications, Kay, you mentioned the LGC, you know, when I had spoken with Ed a while back, you know, some of those were coming to the wrong PO box. And I don't know why they were coming to the wrong address. I have no idea why that apparently was happening over several years. And so, once again, I think it's, that's more of a miscommunication than anything. You know, just from being on the board the last several years, you know, and we're not exactly here for solutions today, we're doing fact finding. But I will mention a couple of things that I've mentioned to many of you out there that some of this is pretty low-hanging fruit as far as solving, you know. We've had problems sometimes meeting a quorum, for instance, on that board. We're very limited on the ability to appoint people because they have to fit in certain sleeves in that legislation or that you can't, you can't have them as a participant. And obviously, if we open that up, I think we got plenty of participants here today. It'd give us a lot more avenues as far as broadening that board and the scope of that board and bringing in other people with other abilities because, you know, a lot of the folks that we try to get on that board may run a hotel. That sounds good in theory, but as Wayne says, went back when you were running your restaurant every day, it's hard to leave. So, you know, it's, you know, a difficult situation as far as, as far as filling the proper board in my, in my perspective. So I think we need to widen the net. And I know that needs to be addressed through legislation, but that's just one idea of mine. So, you know, it opens it up for a lot of other folks. And I think more participation is the better. So I would open up the candidate field and I would probably increase the number of board members as well. And that, I think that would help the participation part. As far as, you know, some of the very things we're talking about today, LGC, obviously very concerning. Nobody likes to get that letter. I will say as far as that, and I've given it a lot of thought, and we'd mentioned this before last year, one of the things that's very solvable that moving forward is having the county do the books. And we'd, we had mentioned that last year, you know, and we've offered that for the same price as the CPA firm. And obviously, you know, we have a whole department with expertise in that. We wouldn't charge a dime more. And then if there is problems moving forward with the LGC or whomever it is, you know, they can come to the county. And because we, and then that way, we can, we can address a lot of the things the LGC addressed. If we're doing it ourselves, you know, we probably wouldn't be in this position today. And so, you know, that's, that's an avenue we could do. I don't want to make it, you know, because Laura talks, looks at Facebook a lot. And so, you know, she, once she reads Facebook, she'll say, well, you know, are y'all taking over TDA? No, that's not what we're doing. As Brian Stein will probably tell all of you, we've got enough departments as it is. And so, we don't need to borrow, to have more departments. So, you know, my viewpoint is, you know, we just need to broaden the scope of the board, look at taking over the books and taking that onus off of Ed. Because Ed, obviously, you wouldn't have all these people in the room today if we didn't think he does a wonderful job. I mean, everybody's shaking their head. He does a wonderful job. And I mentioned this to Ed before. I said, you know, in my own personal business, I like dealing with people, meeting one-on-one. The last thing I want to do is back office stuff. I have a whole staff for that. That's not, that's not my bailiwick. That's not my strength. You need to stick with your strengths. And I'd encourage, you know, moving forward, Ed to stick with his strengths and let us take the onus off him and free him up. And to me, that makes a, makes a lot more effective TDA, strength on strength and communication. And I think that's the best, in my opinion, that's the best answer. You know, just a couple of ideas there.
A thought on that, and this will go to Margaret, I guess. If the county were to manage the books, would that take the requirement of a separate audit off of TDA and that, would that become part of our audit and wouldn't be another expense?
No, sir. Because they're a separate entity with their own separate tax ID and responsibilities for the state, that would still require an audit for them. They are pulled into our audit as a component unit. They're considered a discrete component unit of the county because this board appoints that board and has authority over the appointing all the members. So it wouldn't change that.
And... Mr. Chairman, I'm reminded of, a couple of months back, we had to make some decisions that wasn't comfortable to me. We had to go outside of our own county to get a job done with work first from DSS. And, you know, this situation has some similarities in that, you know, for eight years, we've got, I don't want to call it bad, but an improvement recommendation to our audit. And one of the questions we need to ask is, since it's an eight-year process, and Scott, you being on that committee and on that board and Wayne, has this not been, and by the way, the material references to not enough board members to have a quorum, which means you can't do any business, you can't act on any business or anything. But the question needs to be asked, has this been discussed by the board? If so, how many times? Was there any recommendations? Were the recommendations followed or not followed? Because it's not, you know, it's not our first dance. It's not that board's first dance in getting instructions from the state that some things needed to be changed to have an accurate reporting. And, you know, they're doing their job, we have to do our job. Brian has to do his job to try to get things in perspective. So, you know, did we have a bunch of meetings? Did we have some discussion on how to solve the problem? And what was the end result of it?
I believe, Maynard, someplace I was reading through this, I believe if a board member misses two meetings, they're supposed to be out.
That's correct.
I don't know where it's in here, but I read through it the other day and that was part of the... I don't think, though, that we've missed a lot of meetings because of participation. I think we've done pretty good overall.
Wayne, that's on page 25.
Yeah, right.
It's highlighted, TDA board members who miss two consecutive board meetings should, shall be removed from, from the board. And the setup, and just to bring this a little bit in perspective to how long a process and how much effort was put in to create the TDA, I championed a good bit that we ought to have each little town, city as part of the TDA and suggested that members, they had at least one member from each one of those town halls, cities, whatever, to be on that board. But obviously, when you are operated by and controlled by a board, it's like this board. If only two of us showed up a couple of times a year, four or five times, there'd be no business conducted. Well, it's the same scenario with other boards which operate under this board or under the direction of this board. So we probably need to look at some compliance on that end and if somebody's not attending regularly enough to be a part of that board, we need, not we, that board needs to dismiss them and get somebody who would be better for that position. Thank you.
And Maynard, I agree with you on that. What comes back to the problem is, we're just having a tough time filling the board as is because we're so limited on the choices, because it's got to be in Morganton County, Valdez, somebody, you know, in the tourism industry. So it's a very narrow field. So it's easy, you know, I wish we had a pool of candidates that were in line to say, okay, you know, this person's missed two meetings and all of a sudden, you know, we've got a pool here that we can pull from. And kind of like, you know, with the animal thing we set up. And, you know, we've got people coming out of the woodwork to serve on that. We've got a whole pool of candidates there. So if somebody steps back and misses, you know, it's not a big deal because then we have somebody else to fill the spot. We just don't have anybody to fill the spot at this point. So that's why we have to look at legislatively, in my opinion, just kind of open that up a little bit.
Well, it might be time to consider an alternate committee person. If somebody can't be there, they fill in for that person, which would get you to a quorum. I think we have two commissioners on it. We don't need another commissioner, but maybe we need somebody from the Morganton Council, the Valdez Council that serve as alternates. And when somebody says, we're not going to have enough for quorum, we can call, you can call them them and you'd end up with a quorum. Would be one answer to the problems.
And once again, on that one, we'd have to change the legislation to even do that. And there is, there is a finite amount of members we can't have. So it comes back down to, we're kind of in a corner as far as the makeup.
On page 13, it talks also about giving grants out to small communities. And when we first started out, we were pretty faithful to the small communities, which the legislation, I think, says we need to be doing. However, I think we sort of got away from that. And I'd like to see this group again, for the smaller municipalities that aren't the big three in this thing, I'd like to see that we make sure that they get some money when they request it. We had a lot of, lot of different people asking for money for different things and that's pretty hard to do because so many of them aren't really tourism-related.
Madam Clerk, you had sent us a sheet with the members of the authority. And I see that we have two vacancies and they have been vacant since December of 2018. Had we not received any applications on those two particular seats?
We have a number of applications on file now, but then we didn't. I think was, one of them was Jared Bailey seated.
We got a Jared Bailey, Travel Tourism at Large, whose term expired on December 31st of 2018. We have a Teresa Selman from the Inn at Glen Alpin. I think it would be a county appointment, maybe, CFT, that's county?
Collectors of occupancy taxes.
Excuse me, collectors of occupancy tax. And her term expired on December 31st of 2018. And...
I was thinking Angel Crawley, perhaps, might have been the other one.
That's from Comfort Inn.
One of the hotels.
I didn't see that one at all. So obviously, now, let me ask you something else, Kay. We got this, it says Tourism Development Authority, nine members, two years' term, but we only have seven members. What was the legislation on that, Wayne? Is it seven or is it nine?
I'm not sure.
We're not sure. Well, let's look back in our paperwork and see if we can find...
Page 24, there's a, indicates seven members, including ex officio. I think I've seen another number somewhere. It says, consisting of seven members.
All right, for the purpose of moving along, we're just going to say that it is seven members. I don't know why it says nine at the top of this paper, Kay.
That may be counting the two ex officios.
It could be. All right, that could be the two. Got you. All right. So we do have some, and obviously, I asked that we wait to make the appointments until after we had this, this meeting. So Kay, today, if we were able to make the appointments to move forward, do we have enough for all seven positions?
I believe so. I can confirm, but I know I have several on file.
All right. All right, other comments?
Mr. Chairman, we have a conflict, I think, of statements. Jeff, on page 1, on page 24, it says chairperson. The chairperson will be elected from among the members of the county commissioners. And I think we have a place in there where it says it will be selected at the New Year by the board, the TDA board. I don't have that looked up, but it seems like I read that. So we might need to check that.
You can check that. I think the only thing I've read so far is that we appoint the chairperson and then the vice chairperson is elected from the membership along with anything else I need.
Is there a, there seems to be no direction, whether or not that is to be done annually or just...
No, there's a lot of things that's not spelled out in the legislation itself. Like I say, that's kind of disappointing. It's, there's direction needed in that document and we don't have it. So that may be one of the things that we have to consider. One of the purposes today is, do we seek additional legislation? Do we clean up some verbiage and submit it to be cleaned up to add more members, which I agree with Scott, I think they need more members. Of course, you say you're having a hard time finding members now and then we want to add members, so I don't, I don't know.
Well, we could open the avenues and get rid of those specific sleeves and open it up to more folks that actually, you know, because tourism, you've got a lot of ancillary positions throughout the community. So you don't necessarily, you know, it was written, it was like, you had to be at a restaurant, you had to be at a hotel. Well, that's not necessarily true now. You know, at that time, we didn't even have breweries. And so, I mean, you know, it's opened up a lot. So if we opened up that language, I think we could fill however many seats.
Well, that's the next one I was going to make. This document is old and our tourism has changed so much since this document was presented to the General Assembly. And tourism creates more dollars for us than it ever has and we're all well aware of that. And I'm very appreciative of the fact that we have the tourism dollars. Tourism is doing nothing but growing, so maybe it's time that we take a, take a look at this with new eyes. And that brings us back, do we make this recommendation to the TDA board or are we going to ask for legislation ourselves? I think we need to have a little discussion about that at some point. Clean some of this language up and see what, I want to nail down what our fiduciary responsibilities are and I want to nail down exactly what our oversight responsibilities are so that as we move forward, we will be able to fulfill our charge as a Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, just from my own thoughts, that that ought to be a combined effort in both the Tourism Board and this board. But the other thing, before I forget it, there's a couple typos in this presentation and it refers on page 25 and, no, excuse me, 26 and 27, Brunser County instead of Burke County. So we need to typo correct those. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I agree with Mr. Taylor as well, just, you know, we're talking about communications. I think, to me, our next step is before we, we sit down and address legislation ourselves, I think we need to do it with the TDA board because I would like their input, obviously, about whatever we're going to do moving forward because they may have some ideas that we don't think about. So I think sitting down jointly would be a good idea and then see what steps we need to take as far as tweaking the legislation to make this, make it better for Burke County.
A lot of the legislation when we put together, we really...
Yeah, took it from other TDAs, you know, and tweaked it a little bit and whatever. So I think it's time probably to rewrite this whole thing and get it up to date and increase the membership.
Okay.
Okay.
It might also be a good idea to see what other counties have done with, with this similar authority. There may be some ideas there that we haven't thought about that, that we might want to incorporate in whatever we do going forward.
Well, I asked Madam Clerk in her spare time to check around on her listserv with, with other TDAs. And she has that package for us now with a, I don't remember how many counties we have, eight or nine counties, for you to take a look at, at, at how they do their processes. I don't want to plagiarize anything. I want, I want to create something that Burke County can be proud of and that, that will address tourism here in Burke County and, and how we need to move forward. Like I said, we, I think we all are very cognizant of the fact that Ed has done a yeoman's job and that the money is, is good. But I, I do have, our responsibilities as a board, and I take this one, uh, a little ser- seriously, with these financial concerns that we had from Margaret and from these other concerns about a document that's probably not the greatest document. I just felt like we needed more clarity today as, uh, how we want to move forward, how we want to get with TDA and set up a meeting to decide how we want to move forward and how we can do that expeditiously and, and do it where the people of this county will know that we're all concerned about making sure this is done right. Here's my goal. I don't want another letter from LGC. That's it. Uh, that concerns me. We've had LGC letters here at the county ourselves for some things that didn't, that they didn't feel were kosher, and I don't particularly like those.
Mr. Chairman, I think our number one priority goal, and I say this with, uh, the facts that, and the information provided to us in the last couple of days with this issue, I think our number one highest goal from this meeting should come from, whatever it takes, that we don't get another letter from the state saying there's concerns and issues that were not addressed and were not fixed. Were not fixed. So, I think our number one goal is, you know, to, to have this agreement between both boards, what it takes to fix that. And we don't wait six months to fix that. It gets fixed quickly. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a slight clarification, I've got my TDA roster pulled up now.
Okay.
It is a nine-member board with two additional ex officio officers. Um, it's always been...
So, is it nine plus, plus those two makes 11?
Seven.
11. Two ex officios, nine members. Um, you've got Morganton, let me start at the top. Morganton, okay, you've got a collector of occupancy. You've got Morganton, Valdez, another collector of occupancy, travel and tourism at large, three seats. Another collector of occupancy and a commissioner seat. It's always been nine seats since I've been here.
Okay, I'm going, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to do this one, one time and one time only right now. Ed, stand up, please. Is it nine or is it seven? Give me one answer. Is it nine or seven? Okay, all right, we're going to have to discuss that problem and, and see how we can fix that, okay? Okay, uh, so we, we got an issue there that we'll have to fix. Okay.
Minutes that created the, uh, resolution...
Yes, sir.
...to create the board. It, it says that there would be, uh, two ex officio members and there would be, uh, it appears seven, uh, initial members.
Okay.
And, uh, the two ex officios would be the director of, of the TDA and...
Ladies and gentlemen, please keep your comments quiet, please.
And would be, uh, the finance director of the county.
All right, I, I lost it because that's running my mouth. Tell me again. I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, nine members including two...
Nine, nine members?
Nine members including two ex officio members, the director of TDA and the county finance director.
Okay, seven and two. Madam Clerk, somehow in, there, there's confusion, okay? And, and we will fix that.
Mm-hmm, and it was back, back in the day.
Back in the day?
Mm-hmm.
It was before Johnny and the, not Wayne and Maynard, but before Johnny. Okay, yes. All right.
But I can, I can assure you, we've been appointing nine for many, many years.
Okay. Which creates another problem because today, I wanted, before we leave, to... Technically, there is no board at TDA right now. And I wanted to make sure that we could reappoint today, uh, so that there, when they do meet, that it would be an official meeting. So, what do I have that I can do as far as you're concerned? Do we have seven that, that needs reappointing or is it less?
I, I would, um, if I were asked to write the appointment item, which I normally do, I would, I would submit one for every seat that has an expired term. I like, I usually do them all at one time, so we, we catch it up.
But you said you have applications so far? Do they cover all seven positions, like a collector of occupancy taxes, et cetera? Okay. Are there those that we would have to vote on?
We'd vote on all of them.
Are there more than one for one of these positions?
No.
There's not?
No.
Okay. We're getting there, aren't we? Okay, keep that one in my mind as we move forward to see if there's any other comments. Mr. County Manager?
I know you said you have one for each position, but if you're not happy with the performance of one of the members, you're not required to just put them on in.
Absolutely.
If they're not getting the job done, doing it right, you don't put them back.
Maybe the board would like to consider, uh, appointing at the next regularly scheduled board meeting and, and opening up, uh, uh, applications, you know, within the confines of the local legislation to, to see if there's more than one person per seat interested.
I think that's maybe too fast, Johnny. I, I'd like to see us wait a little and think this over.
As far as appointments, okay, we can do that. All right, JR, what's the legal ramifications if we don't reappoint these boards and, and they're on expired terms? Is there anything we can, is TDA able to meet or not?
Uh, my initial inclination would be they can meet, but their actions wouldn't have any authority until they're reappointed. But I'd like to chance to look over that.
Did I see somewhere in here that there was some talk about board members continuing until the next appointment? I could, could be wrong about that, but...
I think I read the same thing. I think Kay may, may have sent that out, that if, if we don't reappoint, they still continue to serve. But I don't know if that, about the power of appointment. And then my other question would be, Mr. Chair, is if, if we do wait and we do want to meet with TDA, what's the timeframe, um, when we need to get proposed, um, changes in the existing legislation? Because they will go back to Raleigh here before long. And so, we probably, to me, would need to meet in the next couple of weeks so we can get ahead of this if we do want to make changes, which it sounds like we do. So, I don't know if we, you know, I understand Wayne's point, but I also would like to, you know, go ahead and get this done at the next meeting so we can have that meeting because they start, you would know better than I, what, March? At March or April back to Raleigh? And so, we'd have to get this in the pipeline pretty quickly. So, the longer we wait, we may, may end up not getting corrections for another year of one way. And so, just something to think about.
It would be my goal to meet with TDA next week.
Would you also need to kind of feel, Representative Blackwell or Senator Daniel about how this would move through the legislation?
Yes, that, that was another one of my goals, was to speak to them and tell them if we, if we, between TDA and ourselves, if we decided that we wanted to change some verbiage and change, uh, membership, et cetera, could they expedite that, you know, through, through, quickly? And I know what they'll say, write it up and send it to us, but we'll, we, we'll have...
I wouldn't think it's a problem.
I, I probably not. JR?
If, if, I don't believe the TDA meets before our next regularly scheduled board meeting on the 21st.
Okay.
So, you could add that on to the agenda to appoint...
For appointments.
...members at that time. It wouldn't give you much time to get any community, uh, members other than the ones Kay has right now who would be interested in serving. But it would at least allow them to keep meeting on a regular basis with a full complement.
Gentlemen, without any objection, that's what I'm wanting to do, is go ahead and tell Kay to schedule that. Uh, I think there's enough people in here today. By word of mouth, we can, people will know that we have some openings and anybody that would like to apply that would, would give us an opportunity to look at some more applications. We can do that. So, if you will schedule that for the next meeting.
JR, could those appointments be, uh, made for a lesser time than normal in light of what we're thinking about here?
Well, the, uh, the actual, um, uh, local legislation doesn't give an, uh, an office period of service. It's written as though it would be an annual one. But then I see that these, uh, uh, over here on page 24, that, uh, we're talking about two-year terms. No, I'm sorry, that's just for the staggering of the board.
We have it for two-year terms, is generally what we're doing, Senator.
JR, if we actually had the legislation rewritten and tweaked, would that not negate the appointments and kind of start over?
Well, as long as that's what it says in the local legislation, I think you would need to have that in there.
So, we could do appointments and then, when the new legislation comes in, start new. So, instead of filling seven seats, we'll be filling whatever it is, 12. And so, that'll make that need of shortening the period obsolete, in my, in my viewpoint.
Yeah, I think as, as long as we, uh, address that in the legislation.
If that's the route we want to take to try to do new legislation, uh... Scott, I'm going to put you in charge of this. I'm, I'm, you're going to, uh, I'm going to task you with, with, when we work with TDA, I want you to take charge of that, uh, to find the language that you, that we would like to recommend to TDA. And then the both of us agree that that's the language we would like to see moving forward.
Be glad to.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All right, anybody else have any other comments or are we where we need to be? Anybody? All right, thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Ladies and gentlemen, and the audience, I thank you for being here today, too. Uh, being representative of, uh, local government. I appreciate our friends from Morganton being here. And, um, Ed, if you and Polly could stay with me for about five minutes after we finish up here, I would appreciate that. Is there anything else that needs to come before the board at this time? Hearing nothing, I will entertain a motion.